The Planning Board. Can everybody introduce themselves, please?
Nelson Gil, member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Hingin, alternate.
Patrick Lyons, alternate.
And with two full-time members not here, Mike will be a voting member tonight. Okay, Mike? On to that. Okay. Item two is adoption of meeting minutes from the August 3rd, 2022 regular meeting, and July 25th, 2022 joint workshop with the council. Is there a motion? Are any changes? Sessions, decisions? Move?
Second.
All in favor? Item number three is a final plan review for major subdivision entitled Jesse's Beach Subdivision Two for applicant-owner RPM Properties LLC. The proposal is to create an 11-acre lot, major subdivision. The subject property is approximately 27-acre lot, tax map 107, Lot 17, located on Garland Road, Jesse's Beach Way, in a rural and limited residential shoreline zoning districts. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Steve Salisbury.
Okay, Steve.
We've been working through TRT comments for the past couple of months, and we're close. We've just handed you a revised Declaration of Covenants and homeowners' association, showing some improvements there in the language about collecting money to take care of Garland Road. I'm unclear from staff whether they've gotten over the issue about us having access to Garland Road or not. I suppose they have. We haven't talked about it for a while. I supplied the title insurance policy, which insured not only the land but the access to it.
I think that's one thing that under staff asked, that you explain a little further in detail just exactly how you're saying that the subdivision has a right to go across Garland Way.
That's the long storied history of Garland Road. There was some litigation over that strip of land 20, 25 years ago between Jesse Garland and the neighbors. There was a settlement. The Butters assigned, signed a deed granting clear title to Jesse Garland and Brenda Collins, who have since conveyed their fee interest in the road to Caribou Development, but they also reserved rights over that strip to convey to us. So I'm comfortable that we've got rights to that road.
And could you explain a little more? The owner has added, one of the folks from Mariville subdivision brought up the issue of road maintenance.
Yes.
He apparently had discussion with them.
I haven't myself, but Sue Gerard, one of the developers, she's a real estate agent for the developer, she's been negotiating with them.
I mean, it is right in the Declaration of Protective Covenants now.
Yep.
Under road maintenance, a portion of the dues collected will go towards the annual maintenance of the section of Garland Road that falls between Route 180 and the turnoff to Jesse's Beach Road only.
Yep.
And there is some contribution from this subdivision to the road maintenance on that particular section of road.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Any other issues that you want to bring up, Steve?
The conditions, we concur with the conditions that Elena proposed, eight conditions. Next week, we're going to file our stormwater permit for the road construction with the Department of Environmental Protection, and P.L. Jones is going to write us a letter saying they can supply domestic water from drilled water wells. I just haven't seen a copy of it yet. We used to do that all the time, then we kind of, for years, given up on that. The letter said the same thing time and time again.
Now, the conditions that Steve's talking about, the eight conditions, do you have a copy of those? Do we have to?
On the staff memo?
There should be a staff memo for Jesse's.
Sure.
If not, I can give you my copy.
I suspect we'll have to list that in the motion.
Kind of at the end of the packet.
Yeah.
These are the conditions.
Right. Fred, I'm writing the conditions. John, you have it?
It was the very last page. Sorry, Dan.
Okay.
John is not fine. Or responsible, John.
And yeah, John, when you, if it goes to the, when it goes to the vote, these are the conditions you have to outline verbally.
Any questions from the board?
How do the, and how do, and do, does it need be written down? How the dues are assessed and who has to agree on them and how much money actually goes to road maintenance? I mean...
Yeah, the developer will set the initial fee, and then the homeowners' association, once it starts to get populated by different owners, can adjust the fee up or down as needed to take care of the road.
Does the developer maintain, like, voting rights for unsold lots? In other words, if there's nine lots, then he sells two, he owns seven, and seven votes?
Yes, right. Yep.
Which is pretty typical, right?
That's correct.
And one of the conditions, Nelson just pointed out that you're going to include the agreements made between the applicant and the neighboring association for the maintenance of Garland Road. I mean, that must be with Mariville, which I think some people hear. We'll be asking you some questions later.
We haven't gotten the final text to that agreement, but it's coming.
Okay. So hopefully you folks will be able to provide us some information on that when we get to the public hearing, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Not on Altria, did it?
No, I was mostly concerned with the access and all that.
Okay.
I think it's covered. As soon as it moves into lead, it gets confusing. What time, sorry?
Developer stated on the record what they provided illustrates right title interest.
So I have no question.
Okay. And fire is all set with what they're going to do?
Yep.
What you want done?
Oh, yeah. They, Mrs. Salisbury has gone above and beyond, you know, our recommendations, so...
If I remember correctly, it's going to be a 20,000-gallon system?
That's correct.
Kind of curious, not that, I mean, if, if the fire department used the water in the system, is it the fire department's responsibility to fill back up?
Yes.
Okay. I just curious.
If we, say if we were fighting a fire up in that area and we need water, and we go take from that system...
Some other property.
Correct. But if we were in that, fighting a fire on the Garland Road or for Jesse's Beach, then it would be on the HOA to refill it back up.
Okay.
Just curious, not a requirement, but I'm just curious, Lot 10 to be conveyed with no access to Jesse's Beach Way, it does, it looks like it's a pretty good grade there, but is the thought just that probably not going to be any development in Lot 10?
No, that's just a buffer for the gravel pit.
Okay.
Any questions, Patrick? Mike?
Patrick looks very serious.
Well, so does Mike. Mike looks like he wants to ask a question.
Well, I think the, oh, go ahead, Mike.
So in the, and Steve, I guess, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but under the conditions under the staff memo, one of the things include requirement for mandatory membership in a road association. How do you do, how do you get somebody to mandatory join? Is that through a deed or is that...
Yeah, part of the deed. They'll, they agree to buy the land, that that'll be a burden on the property.
Okay.
That they be a member.
Because I think that's all in the Declaration of Protective Covenants.
Yes.
Yeah, the, you know, the major issues that were pointed out by staff seem to have been addressed either through the updated covenants. I think RTI has been satisfied to the degree that we need to write title interest, to the degree that for our purposes, we're not here to adjudicate whether or not they actually have it. They just need to show, you know, provide us something that says, this just says that we have right title interest.
And that was basically the conversation I had with Elena before she...
Went down?
Yes. Went down for the count. Along the same lines that...
Yeah.
That they've done what they need to do.
Yeah, and I think the major issues were the water, you know, source and quality. You've got to put it on an aquifer, but the covenants address that with the restrictions on residential use and no commercial use, and the, the conditions provide, you know, the requirement that they show adequate groundwater supply, so I will be interested in hearing members of the public concerns about the road and the association, but otherwise, I'm good.
Nelson? Okay, open the public hearing, and if you want to address the board, please come to the lectern, state your name, and where are you from? So I hope somebody from Mariville Road Association.
Jeff Campbell, Secretary slash Treasurer of Beach Hill Estates, homeowners' association on Peninsula Drive in Mariville. Interested in this because our only access to Route 180 is over the Garland Road, and since 1987, when our homeowners' association was started, it's been our responsibility for all maintenance and winter maintenance of the Garland Road. Basically, we had two concerns with this new subdivision, which we outlined in the letter that we sent to you. The first and foremost was if there were any conditions regarding the upgrade to Garland Road because of this subdivision, either from the planning board or any other authority having jurisdiction, such as the fire department, if they had certain codes that Garland Road had to be upgraded for the subdivision, that this subdivision would be solely responsible for those costs of the upgrade, and we asked for something in writing from them. As Steve said, I've had one discussion with Sue Gerard, and that was last Thursday, and she seemed very willing to provide us with that in writing, that they would cover all costs for upgrades to Garland Road, both as conditions to meet code and if there is any damage to it during the construction part of the subdivision. We had a lengthy discussion on Thursday, but have not heard, my understanding was that they were going to give to us something in writing that we could look at and sign off on regarding that part of it, and have not heard back from them. And then we also discussed the maintenance issue, and our biggest concern is we have a mutual understanding that they will be paying for maintenance for the Garland Road, but in the past, there are two other subdivisions that have already been approved on Peninsula Drive, which is part of a right-of-way that we also use, and I believe that those two, one was called Cranberry Shores in 2008, and the other one is Lakewood Shores, and I'm not sure the date that was approved, and both of them in the planning process had the same language of, yes, we are setting up a homeowners' association, we will help maintain the road, so on and so forth, but none of that ever came to fruition. I do not even believe any of the homeowners' associations have been set up. So it's been up to us to try to track down people individually, to try to get them to help for maintenance of the roads. So we were just looking to get something in writing beforehand, before it got approved, something in writing that we could have and see, and as I discussed with Sue, we knew it was going to be hard to come to exact details of what exactly was going to take place, but if we could just have a memorandum of understanding or something like that in hand before the approval got through, because our biggest concern is the approval goes through, and then, like the other two subdivisions, the homeowners' association never appears, and we're left, we're going to still maintain the road, we're the last ones in, we're going to take care of it, whether they help or not, but we would really like something in writing before the plan gets put through, that we're going to have help maintaining the road.
Well, one of the conditions that we talked about, there's a list of eight conditions, and one of them, like I said, include the agreements made between the applicant and neighboring association for the maintenance of Garland Road.
Okay.
So that has to be done with you folks before...
Okay.
We can approve the plan with that condition.
Okay.
If that doesn't happen, then they're not going to build the subdivision.
Okay.
Notable in that language is the agreement, too, not just a statement of their intention, the actual agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was kind of curious, too, about, about the other subdivisions that you talked about, because...
Yeah.
I don't think there's any year-round residence on any of those lots. A couple of lots, I think, have been sold, but...
There's, there is going to be one year-round residence.
Is there?
They're building a house now. There are several seasonal, smaller places. And some of them have been very forthcoming with helping us. They've contacted us, said, hey, we want to help with the road, but there is no formal organization in place that we can reach out to. It's just a matter of going to each individual homeowner that we can reach.
I have another question out of curiosity. Elena showed me a site plan for your subdivision?
Yes.
And it has, like, 70 or 80 lots?
No.
No?
We have 20 lots in ours. There's another section in Mariville that's not developed, and then...
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't any other houses there, but there was a site plan that showed...
And I might be speaking out of term, but that's never been approved for any subdivision.
Okay.
The lots, they're all surveyed and laid out, and maybe Steve might have even done it.
We did.
Yeah. But it's never been approved for a subdivision.
Oh, okay.
Doug Godd ended up lining it all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I saw that site plan, was like, holy cow.
And that, and we'd like to get something in place now, so that it's our view that there is going to be more subdivision on the peninsula, and if we can get this worked out with this, it'll make it a lot easier for the next subdivision that comes in to plan, saying, hey, we have this all in place, this is how we're going to do it.
All right. Thank you. Very informative.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm just kind of curious, Don, I mean, you were at the last meeting, is what is taking place tonight in these agreements kind of set your mind at ease? If you don't mind coming up to the podium, I know, I know your history on this lot goes way back.
My pocketbook goes way back. John Burrell. I, I think the proposals put forth this evening are reassuring from our discussion last, at the last meeting, in the fact of, there's, there's other issues that are involved. What makes it important, and is also the roads subject to flooding on occasion, if not maintain, the culminating and that type of thing, which I think, again, I come back to the health, safety issues, if, if emergency personnel are unable to, to gain access because of weather related, I think that's what makes it paramount. But I think what's been discussed this evening is certainly a giant step forward, as I said last weekend, going forward with, this situation will present itself again in Ellsworth, as it will in most communities around here, as we get more into this. And so I think the Peninsula Road Association has really done us all a favor by the fact of someday, maybe Ellsworth will have to accept the road as a, as a basin, at least it'll be in half decent shape when they do it. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Anybody else? I will close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board?
My question just has to do with enforcing the homeowners' association rules and so forth. So, for example, a gentleman here said, well, you know, we had some sort of understanding with two other road associations, and they kind of disappeared, okay? And I'm not here to judge that, it was way before my time, so, but the point is that, you know, we have a homeowners' association stuff built into the declaration here, and that's all well and good, it sounds good, it sounds like a decent model to me personally, and all that, but what happens and who's responsible for whatever if that homeowners' association doesn't come to pass? In other words, it, they, it goes the way of these other homeowners' associations, which were just to disappear. I mean, is it the, does the city go after them, or who sues who, I guess, is the question?
Let's look down at the end of the table.
So, it depends.
Good legal question, legal answer.
So if the, if the, so the, the road association is a legal entity?
Right.
And it has the covenants and restrictions provide it certain rights to enforce, and if, so if there's an agreement, and whatever party doesn't follow through in the agreement, the association and, you know, their, their executives can bring it on behalf of the association, a private claim again, so it'd be, it'd be a private matter, dispute. The city wouldn't get involved, other than potentially if whatever's happened is a violation of any of the conditions or approvals, then they could potentially be in violation of their permit, and then there could be a land use enforcement action or something along those lines from the city, but in all likelihood, it's a private right of action between the parties.
So you're saying...
And I would guess that actually, the Mariville Road Association could put something, could ask to put something in that agreement with this association to kind of, okay, if, if it does fall apart...
Yeah, you can...
What's the error?
Yeah, you can lay out, you know, specific remedies in an agreement, or you can just say, you know, you're in breach and we're going to court. All depends, so I don't know, without looking at what the agreement is, I can't say for certain, but...
Right, because that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, and it would be wise for them, the associations, if they want to enforce, to record the agreement with the covenants and restrictions as part of it, just so it's there in the...
But that's not our responsibility to have...
Not our responsibility, no. You know, we, the ordinance requires covenants and restrictions, I believe, to some degree, as far as for the road associ, you know, for the road, you know, that there be some maintenance of it, but beyond that, it's kind of between them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Nelson? What is the rule of the board?
You make a very, very long motion, I think.
I guess, should we...
Can we just refer to this list?
Do we have to read those eight conditions, Patrick, you think, or just reference them? I don't think we have to read them verbatim. I think we can just reference them as part of the motion. We do need to vote on the waivers, though, individually, I believe. They're requesting the waivers for the average daily trip count. And then, so we want to vote on whether we're going to grant the waiver. I believe that's the only waiver they're requesting, is that correct?
I thought there was another one.
Yeah, you have to vote on the waivers.
Oh, and the paving, they're asking...
Traffic impact analysis and data.
Yeah, so we want to, we should vote on whether we grant those waivers, and then as part of...
Can you refer me to the language of those waivers? Oh, and here you have. Okay, apparently, apparently I have that.
So do that in your first motion.
Okay, will you assume I'm going to give a motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Motion, we accept the final plan review for a major subdivision entitled Jesse's Beach Subdivision Two for applicant-owner RPM Properties LLC, subject to a list of eight conditions that have to be met prior to the signing of the plans, and we also, do what? Separate?
I think for Patrick, we have to...
Is it separate, or can it be in one?
I don't, I think it could be in one.
Okay, and, and so doing, we grant the waivers for the traffic impact analysis and the paving.
I would just amend that motion to include the conditions outlined in the staff memo dated September 7th, 2022.
So just a specific, a specific reference to the date, and I accept that.
Yeah, and we just, that will be...
And agree wholeheartedly.
So do you understand that?
I got it.
Okay. And you understand, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
If they start building, you don't have an agreement, make sure you go to the...
We have a question on the waivers, too. I guess related to that.
Well, the waiver had to do with paving their portion of the subdivision, their road.
Right.
Oh, yeah, right.
That has to do with just on their subdivision, how do we...
That's bad. That's bad.
Well, there was, there was communication from Maine DOT that where it goes out onto a state highway, that they were uncertain of the traffic council, the initial traffic council of this subdivision is going to generate.
Yeah, I think the thing is that the volumes are so low as to...
Right, well, a lot of volume, yeah.
Much as I like traffic impact analysis.
I think, kind of, Rick, you're a traffic engineer by trade and for many years, and you, you didn't have any concerns with the waiver on the traffic.
I did not.
Yeah, so, if that's at all, you know, this was considered by the board and the rec already.
We've just, we've drawn an IDOT, I think.
I didn't just pull, and Florida, Georgia, put them on.
Did they say anything contrary to what we said here?
No, just our concern was, you have a subdivision, 11, that's just 11 more lots to look through, but eventually that adds up to 200 and something more.
And that's, and that's a problem that we see time and time and time again, whether it be subdivisions or developments along a commercial strip or whatever, it's like, this guy doesn't have an impact, this guy doesn't have an impact, this guy doesn't have an impact, collectively, he goes to hell, so, we're aware of that.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, final plan review for major use site development, and major subdivision entitled Branch Pond LLC. The applicant-owner Branch Pond LLC, the proposal is to construct a multifamily dwelling containing 72 dwelling units. The subject property is a 2.68-acre lot located at 377 High Street, tax map 16, Lot 16, in the commercial zoning district. Someone here representing the developer?
Andrew McCullough, and John Bates is also here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think she might be having her journey through ours. Okay.
Thanks. Good night. We made some revisions to the plan per the discussion that we had at the last planning board meeting. We lengthened the building by eight feet, but we also moved the footprint north slightly so that we could provide a 20-foot lane, if you will, around that south side of the building, and adjusted our radius, radii next to the building so that the emergency vehicles could maneuver around it. We did cluster the utilities that are crossing the street. We relocated the water line and the hydrant and the underground electric. We relocated the water line and the hydrant and the underground electric so that they are nearer to where we're going to connect into the city sewer system, so that it would be, so that there would be less disturbance. We did submit additional water flow data from Maine Fire Protection. That was in the submittal, back on the eighteenth, or whenever our due date was. We revised our lighting plan. We reduced the intensity of the lighting plan so that we do not have even point-one-foot candles beyond the property line. We added the sidewalk along the edge of the highway, a five-foot-wide sidewalk with a curb. We also reduced the parking per the discussion that we had last month. We did not reduce it a full twenty-five percent. And the other item, additional traffic modeling was requested regarding the queuing from the intersections and whether it impacts the driveway. We have not received that data backed as of tonight, yet. I was hoping I might be able to have it in my hand today, but I didn't. Essentially, we're asking for two waivers. One, and well, I, one, I'm not sure if it's a waiver regarding the sidewalk. We are asking for your approval to utilize a precast concrete curb along the road in lieu of granite. And as I had stated in my letter to you dated August 29th, our reasoning is because the cast-in-place is consistent with what was used on Myrick Street, it's consistent with what was used up on Beachland Road when it was improved, it is consistent with the freshies across the street, and there is no other granite curbing in the vicinity. So I don't know, I don't know that that's actually a waiver, but it's something that you, the way it's worded in the ordinance, that you have to approve an alternate, if we are requesting an alternate. I did ask for a waiver to the lighting plan. In reviewing Elena's conditions that she wrote up after the final submission, I didn't see where she really had any question with that lighting, the revised lighting plan. It is a lower intensity. It is much more closely conforming to the Night Dark Sky Society standards than what our ordinance is. And we have, I will say, on other projects that we've done within the city, we have worked to follow those standards more, and requested waivers in the past versus having, meeting the standards that are in our ordinance. We, in reviewing the conditions that Elena wrote up for the meeting, I believe that we are comfortable with those conditions, if you find them acceptable to us.
You want to have a question about traffic?
I have lots of questions. Well, I have no questions, so they don't have to...
Right, you have none right now.
I thought that was a very well-done, right? And that's a, that's a condition for us to review it before it gets signed, so...
Yes.
It is what it is. I mean, I get that, and I'm okay with that, right?
Well, I guess I would question, if you're not happy with...
What they say?
What they've provided so far could potentially that result in a no vote, I'll say. I mean, at what point, you know, when you get that information, do we have to have a special meeting to say, okay, we're giving the final approval, or...
Well, it's a condition to be met. Now, so what the question really is, is when that, when that report comes in, if it's all okay, then it's no sweat, off we go. If it's, if it's bad, then the question is, or if there's some issue, what do we do then?
But who makes the determination of, I mean, it's not like getting a DEP approval.
Well, I think it's ours. I mean, my guess would be, it was ours to make that determination, as far as I can tell. And, and if it was, I mean, I also assume that if it came in and there was arguable points or whatever, that that argument could take place, and I, I mean, it's not like an argument, argument, right? It's a discussion.
Discussion.
Could take place between the time it's submitted and the time it's signed, and if it's not satisfactory, then it's not signed, and it doesn't happen. And inconceivably, the worst-case scenario would come back another vote, I think. But that's my take.
How did they, how did Elena frame the condition?
She just said, provide an updated traffic study showing no significant negative impact from the project or conflict, between the project and the ninety-five percent queue length, which was the key issue.
Well, yeah, ultimately, the planning board has to make that determination...
Right.
That there's no significant impact. So that, this isn't, yeah, it's not like a condition where we just, you have to provide a form. There has to be some kind of determination by this board that there's no significant impact. So I think I would interpret that, that we would have to meet in a meeting. I mean, it could be very, it could potentially be very narrow, if we're going to say, just meet on that one issue, to determine whether we find it satisfactory. If we do, great. If we don't, then I think...
Well, that's Plan B, right?
Well, so that, I think to John's point, do we want to approve something that potentially could be unwound if they're, if they come back as, you know, serious problems? And, I mean, I would want a meeting where, you know, your, our traffic guy...
Sure.
Is reviewing this. So, I mean...
In terms of, in terms of...
I don't want to, you know, if we're good with everything else, you know, this, you know, I don't want to, let's say we vote to approve it, I don't want to hold up the project at the same time, you know? If that's a condition, then...
Well, it could, it would be, the problem would be if it comes back and it's, you know, kind of an advert, you know, I don't believe it, or whatever. And then that might require another vote or whatever, after discussion. My question would be, is do we actually need to vote here, in a special meeting, or at the beginning of the next meeting? Or can we do that by email or something?
No, it needs to be a public meeting.
Does it?
Yeah, it would need to be an open session under Freedom of Access Act.
So you then have the option of the board is to set a special meeting before the next monthly meeting, if the study comes in quicker than later, if it's like, right before the next meeting?
Have you gotten any sense from Svego, when they're going to...
I expect, I expected it optimistically today. I expect it no later than the beginning of next week.
If it allows your fears at all, for it's getting more overly complex, and I've been by the site several times in the last few weeks, and I suspect that there will be no problem, really, with the queuing back past the sites, I mean, past the site.
I will say that I have made it a point to be up there at some high, high-traffic times in the past four weeks, and even during last weekend, on a very high-traffic midday timeframe, I did not observe the queue backed up into, or in front of the traffic.
And it's not like they're not, they're not alternatives for the people that live there. I mean, if they can't come out and make that left turn, I mean, if they're familiar with the neighborhood, which way it will be eventually.
Yeah.
They turn right and go around the block and come out at the light, and all's good to go.
Correct.
The question is, if that happens a couple of times, a couple of times a year, or whatever, that's not a big deal. But if it happens all the time, then that is a big deal, I think.
Right.
So, but I, you know, I'm not speaking to the legality or whatever, when we take those...
Well, I know if it's so much of legality, it's just that, it's a logistical thing, right? Ultimately, the way that condition is drafted, we as a planning board have to make a determination on the adequacy of the traffic study. Does that satisfy ordinance? And we can't do, we have to do that in a meeting.
So, the question I would have along those lines, just for clarification, is if we have to delay that, or come back and have a meeting about that, does that screw you up royally?
It's not ideal.
Well, thanks.
Well, I mean, now we're into November, right? So, and then we, you know, we've got...
No, is this a fall groundbreaking?
But we can't, we can't approve this project, period, until we have that study. So I understand it's not ideal, but that's just the nature of it. I think the question is, so with everything else, if we're able to, let's assume, we haven't even voted on it, we approve it with that condition, you know, there's some insurances you can start moving forward with getting things in the project going, but ultimately, it's all contingent upon us reviewing that study and finding it satisfactory, so...
So, correct. So my question would be, is if, if we can get to the point where everything else is off the table tonight, resolved, then whether it's a special meeting, or whether it's the meeting at the beginning of October, and I haven't looked at what the date is for the October meeting yet, but if we had, at that point, my LARS prepared, so that the language was all set for the my LARS, and then we could be, and we had information saying that it appears that the queuing is not an issue, then we'd be comfortable, we'd be in a position where we were comfortable to prepare those my LARS, bring those my LARS, discuss it at October 2nd or 3rd, or whenever it is, and walk out...
I think it's the fifth.
The fifth, walk out the door, so that then we could schedule, excuse me, schedule our utility work after Columbus Day, when we're permitted to get in there, and get that done.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that, that works for me, and we just would make sure, again, assuming we are good with everything, except that, we would just have to have an agenda item on the meeting, you know? We could do it first, to just say, you know, reviewing the traffic plan, and, you know, per condition of approval.
I mean, if, for example, Andrew, if you've got that plan tomorrow, I mean, I have no problem having a special meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, and it'd just be for, most likely, just be for that one item.
Right.
And if there's four of us here, we can vote on it. So, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to wait until another one.
Right.
Well, if you have to have a special meeting with a vote, and I'm sorry that this is getting so complex, because I'm, I'm more than willing to make it easier.
Yeah.
Don't we have to have public hearings and announcements, and we just can't call a special meeting?
We'd have to...
Well, there's a timeframe.
You have to table it, and we have to follow like a normal hearing.
I'm sorry?
We have to table it, and then we have to follow like a, it's a shorter timeframe than an actual planning board meeting, but there's still like a ten-day timeframe or something like that to lay it out.
So you have to announce it, you just can't say, hey, let's do it.
Right.
You guys can figure that out. If they come to you tomorrow, then maybe we could do it in two weeks. If they come to you in a week, then it probably ends up in the beginning of October anyway, so...
Right.
But I just, yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing this right, for everyone's purposes, because we do have to make that deliberation. But I think something along these lines satisfies the procedural requirements, if that's how we perceive.
So, I did have to ask a question. If it, if it comes back negative, meaning whatever the magic number was on the queue that you're looking for, what is the, what is a potential solution? Like, what would be, what would we be looking at?
I think that the...
And, and what would be the impact?
I think the, well, one of the solutions would be, and I'm just, you know, kind of winging it, would be to prohibit left turns out of the, out of the site, and, you know, make people, force people to go...
Can we just allow, I mean, just common sense?
Well, one would be a sign, that would be the thing, one like no left turn, and the other would be channelization at the driveway, or whatever. You know, similar to what they've done at Katie, Global. I mean, Global has, Global Beverages has a right turn out only around the side, so it would be something similar to that. I mean, that would be...
Right, right, okay.
One of the elements of the fix.
Right.
I mean, it's, I don't know that it's a, I don't know that, yeah, I don't see a fix that you can come up with...
Right, that's where I just, my brain was...
That's going to be a deal breaker for you, to tell you the truth.
Sure.
In terms of expenses and stuff.
Right.
And it's not like we're going to say, hey, throw down a hundred thousand dollars so we can buy new signal.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess I just have to express my frustration a little bit, because, you know, it was supposed to be an afternoon job, and it didn't turn out to be an afternoon job. It's five weeks, six weeks, and it was eight thousand dollars, and now we're into this, you know?
Well, what can I tell you?
I know, yeah. It's the way of the times, I suppose. But, and then ultimately...
We can talk privately about the...
Yeah, no, and then ultimately, no, I mean, but ultimately, you know, at the end of the day, what are we, what is the burden on the developer, I guess, is what I'm asking? What would be the burden on the developer to a pre-existing deficiency? Just from, just asking the question, I'm not...
Well, like, like we've been talking with the, you know, the other things, it's kind of like, you know, one developer, no problem, second developer, no problem, third developer, no problem, but the...
Right.
At the, at the end of the day, all of those things together make a problem.
Right.
Most typically, what happens, and this is kind of unfair, is the developer who actually causes the problem, in the end, gets the fix. So, in other words, developer one doesn't cause the problem, developer two is still okay, and then development three suddenly is too much, whatever that means, then developer three typically has to fix it. But that's why you use development fees and things like that, but that's, that's another whole discussion.
Which unfortunately, Ellsworth does not have.
That would be part of the discussion.
In that zone, there's the impact zone for that merry-go-round there, so, that's part of it. Those fees are there.
Oh, yeah, that one's there, yeah.
Yeah, we do have the impact fees.
Okay?
Yeah.
Should we ask any more questions, or...
Well, I think, based on where this conversation went, it's pretty important to make sure everything else is also good.
That's would be...
So, just banging through the checklist here, evidence of financial capacity, in your August 18th letter, you indicate a letter was received. This memo from staff is dated September 2nd, and says, "Letter has been submitted, but it provides no evidence of financial capacity." So, not sure, we're looking for a different letter?
Okay, the letter was from the accountant stating that...
Right, I think a concern with the letter was that it didn't specifically denote an actual, like, amount of, like, financial capacity, but it just says that he has the capacity to perform the work, so...
Is that way outside the norm for these financial...
It's a great question, Hassan.
I mean, that's what I've seen it for in the past.
In the past, I don't think banks have said, okay, he qualifies for a three-million-dollar loan.
Well, somebody said that, something like that not too long ago, but I agree, in general.
I think in the past, they've just said, he can afford it, basically.
And, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I thought that primarily, the concern with financial capacity was when there were improvements in the public corridor, or things like that, because there's a, there's a condition, like, John will have to get, or he'll say, Andrew, get me a permit to cut open the roadway, and there's a separate, you know, application for that. and there's a separate, you know, application for that, there's a separate check that needs to be written for that that ensures that there is money to fix the road, if the road needs to be fixed later, et cetera, et cetera. So, there is that, that protects the city from that standpoint.
It sounds to me like precedent is on the side of the applicant here, if it's similar to the letters we've received in the past.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable with it?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I think a standard. A standard level of uncomfortableness.
I mean, it's out of the norm of what other banks have provided.
Right.
Maybe a recommendation to staff, we could clarify this for future applicants. If we're looking for specific numbers, maybe we should say that, or.
Yeah, well, Elena's back out of the discussion with you.
I mean, the letter is from his CPA, from his accountant, says they have the capacity to construct the project. I think that gets the, whether it's the bank saying, we'll give him the money, this is just saying, he's got the capacity, whether that's in cash or the ability or the credit line to get it, for me, that's enough.
His accountant doesn't know, he needs a new accountant.
This is true.
The name of the development, so this was a.
Yeah.
Name of the tallest item on there. But I see on the plans, it's Stone Park property.
Yeah, we can just call it Stone Park for now.
And is there a third one someplace, too? I thought there was a third one, too.
Third's Branch Pond.
Third name.
Well, there's Branch Pond, LLC.
But then there was the stone, whatever. I thought there was a third one mentioned someplace. Anyway, it would be really cool.
Oh, we talked about, you had talked about the 77 at 377.
Oh, yeah, that was when it was a hotel, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, it was purchased under Branch Pond LLC, one of our LLCs, so that's why you see that there, but the project name can be Stone Park.
So, there needs to be consistent in your plans, and whatever, and consistent in the way that city actually refers to this. Because I can imagine someone going to search through and saying, whoa, that doesn't exist, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, so technically, it's still owned by Branch Pond LLC, right? So, that entity owns it. I think they're just looking for a label of the development, right, to call it something? Is that what it's asking?
I mean, we had, because we had tried to revise all of our plans to say Branch Pond LLC.
But I'm not going to label the building Branch Pond LLC.
No, no, no. Talking about labeling the.
The plan.
I suppose.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I'm curious, when we do make the motion, do we read it verbatim, which is Branch Pond, or do we substitute Stone Park?
Yeah, for example, yeah.
I think we substitute Stone Park, I think.
I would just say Stone Park for applicant Branch Pond LLC. That way, it's covered.
Yeah, slash whatever the hell I want to call it, right?
And then we'll update everything.
It's all shallow to bedrock up there, so it is kind of like a stone park.
This is true.
I guess we're should. Yeah, go ahead, ask questions, and we can get some discussion on labels.
I got a couple of questions for you. Number one, for the fire department, you okay with the location of the fire hydrant, as to where it is? How about the shrubs around it?
Well, he's going to have to maintain. Once they.
Probably have to clear around that, so that it's not, whenever you start doing landscaping, that can't be in.
Yeah, I mean, we can adjust the landscaping.
Yeah, as far as the plans show, the goal was to go up while they were installing to make sure that they had the clearance around the hydrant.
Can I just jump in here a sec?
Yeah.
Under water, it says, domestic pressure shouldn't be an issue. Says Seafire Department comments. That makes me a little.
I think they're talking about two different things here. I think they're talking about domestic water supply shouldn't be an issue. However, I have a question, Andrew. If you, do you know what the discussion was, or are you, can tell me what the discussion was at TRT concerning the flow test, the 2002 flow test, as to who did it, at what time they did it, and during what weekday they did it? Do you know?
The new updated flow test we just got?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what time of day they did it.
Okay. So, the reason why I'm asking this, this is kind of a two-fold question for you, for your own benefit. In 2001, we had a static pressure of 78, a residual of 48, and at the flow rate of 795. Less than a year later, it shows a drop in the static, an increase in the residual, and an increase in the flow. And I'm not exactly sure why those numbers are the way they are. For your own benefit, you need to make sure that, on a three-story building, that you're going to have the available flow for the sprinkler on that third story, or whatever, or even in the attic space.
So, I can speak to that, Mike.
Okay.
So, Main Fire went up. The last TRT meeting, I asked John to get a new flow test done because of the issues up in that area. Main Fire did the new flow testing, came back to confirm that it has all the flow calculations required for the three-story building with no issues.
Okay. You have that in writing?
I do, and.
And the reason why I say that is, we have another project in this county right now, that's being held up substantially because of water supply issues for the sprinkler system. You don't want to go through that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why we paid for the new flow test and.
So, I would get it in writing that that is going to be sufficient.
Well, we have the test, we submitted it to.
We do, I do have it. It's in an email from Main Fire, showing that it will meet the requirements for NFPA 13.
Okay. Just want that for the record, that was brought up.
That email be moved into the files?
I just don't want you to get hung up to dry on that.
No, absolutely not. I mean, that, I mean, Thomas, I mean, you can, we sent that to you, you probably can.
Yeah.
Pull that up.
Yeah, so the new results was static PSI of 76, residual PSI of 65, flow of 885. This was on, conducted on Tuesday, August 9th, around 11:30 AM.
Is that the new school? Is that the new school?
Yeah.
Domestic water, as far as you know, I know Reggie's not here, but considering.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any issues for, as far as the metric goes up there.
None were mentioned in TRT, so.
What's that?
When Reggie was there in TRT, none were mentioned.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
Good.
I guess the concrete waiver requires, should talk that before.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no problem with it, if it's consistent with everything else around it.
And you're proposing concrete, a concrete sidewalk and a concrete curb, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, that's what's shown in the plan.
Yes, and that's consistent with everything around it.
Across the street, all Myrick Street, Beachland.
But staff had recommended granite curbing.
Correct.
So, that's what we need to resolve.
Correct.
Sure, and why was granite curbing to be reminded?
When Elena drove around in the area, there is some granite curb up there. It's just pretty inconsistent in terms of where it is. It's excused not local, it was near Beachland or Kingsland that had some granite curbing on it. And like where the Dunkin' Donuts is, is where granite ended and then concrete began, and then all of Myrick Street is concrete, and that's in the plans specifically for that to be concrete.
The granite or the concrete?
I had a tough time figuring that out, but I would have to go with the concrete on Myrick's, probably, and Freshy's, maybe some of the newer stuff up that way.
And did you say there was granite by the Dunkin' Donuts? Does that be the most recent?
Elena mentioned that that's like where the granite ended and concrete began, went one direction and the other.
I think, Patrick, I think the ordinance basically specifies, requires granite on high-traffic roads.
Right, I think most of the curb construction up there was done before the most recent iteration of the ordinance. But I could be wrong, if you know more about that history.
Well, the Beachland is about nine years old. That upgrade is about nine years old now. The Beachland construction. The. Myrick was 2006, '07? I think those plans are dated like 2007. I did not, I was looking at the, what I considered the most heavily-traveled corridors. I did not look on Kingsland. I can't tell you offhand what Kingsland is, and Kingsland may be granite.
Is the, sorry to interrupt, Andrew, is the sidewalk required, or is this something there, remember last time, is the sidewalk required as part of this construction?
There was some discussion about that TRT, that the ordinance would require it for this density of a subdivision.
The fact that it's in the urban core, right?
Right. It was recommended, and we were happy to do it. And I do have notes from the head of Public Works about the difference between granite and concrete.
That was my next question, and what do those notes say?
So, the pricing difference, at least on her assessment, if you have actual quotes or estimates, you can share those. But she said for that property, concrete would be about $3,000 to input for the curbing, and then granite would be about $11,000. Granite's best, concrete's like the middle ground, and then asphalt's the cheapest curbing option that we have around the city.
What makes, this is just information, because I'm not a curb expert. What's the, what's the real difference? I mean, I get what it looks like, but what's the real difference in terms of durability or whatever between concrete and granite? Because I, I mean, I want to, like you say, I drove around, all around the area, and here, there, everywhere, it's like, okay, you know, gee, a plow blade hit this and made a mark, you know, whether it was granite or whatever, and.
Right, so the difference is the main durability that she mentions and the repair of it. So, granite's essentially unbreakable, it's the sturdiest of the materials. Concrete can get chipped and cracked from plowing, and asphalt's not in the discussion, so it doesn't matter. And she mentioned that generally with concrete, we have to have a contractor fix it, but if it's granite, the city can just fix it ourselves. We can land new granite, if need be.
No, but the granite has to be anchored in concrete and stuff. I mean, you just don't go dump it down, right?
No, it has to be embedded in concrete.
Right, I mean, it's a non-trivial replacement. I mean, it's not just like my backyard with those granite stones around.
And the city takes on the responsibility of paying for any upkeep once this is constructed?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't know what the ordinance says, but I can't imagine it wouldn't be.
Yeah, right.
I guess one way.
I mean, they'd ruin it, first of all. The city, the ones that are whacking it up, right?
Looking at the granite, there's not much there, but if we want High Street to have granite, we've got to start someplace. The concrete part of it, I mean, if you look at the concrete on Myrick Street, or pretty much anywhere, concrete holds up pretty good when you've got a straight road, but if you look at Myrick Street where there's curves and entrances, like into Walmart, that's where the plows are.
There's way more wrong with Myrick Street than the curbing. Just saying.
Yeah, as long as the plow can stay straight.
As a traffic person, you're saying that?
Yeah, I am.
This is a pretty straight shot.
That's a, yeah, it's.
Well, let me just say that I personally, for whatever reason, have no problem with using the concrete versus the granite. And, you know, and the fact that there's a concrete sidewalk, I mean, I think that's, I think that's a big plus. And the price, even though the price issue is not supposed to be considered per se, I do. You know, I do consider that. It's like, wow, that's a huge.
They're kind of along the same prices, are. As a result of the parking deferment, is that saving you some money that you could invest in granite curbing?
Whoops.
You see what I.
I don't know what to say to that.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on whether we.
You can let me say, that's beyond the purview of.
Whether it ends up that we actually have to build it out or not, kind of.
Yeah, I mean.
They have to build out, it's really kind of.
And I don't know where that pricing came from. It's probably accurate on material, but like you said, it's far different from a labor standpoint of installing the granite versus. That's just material, so you're looking at probably well over double the cost of the labor cost to install as well.
I'm just kind of curious how much we're saving you in asphalt for the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, I would be, if it was a highly, like, like Patrick said, it's a straight shot there, so I don't see any problem. I obviously, you know, I'm the one paying for it, but I have seen no problem with concrete getting damaged there, you know, from being such a straight shot.
It is. I mean, the places where, I mean, again, what, you know, I'll just reiterate what you said, it's on a couple, some of the tight turns, some of the noses have gotten broken on Myrick, where, and otherwise, it's held up very well.
Yeah, and I get the consistency, you know, let's all do granite, but, you know, at the top of that hill there, on, you know, towards Tractor's Lane, I mean, there's urban core, and then there's urban core, as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, once you get to the top of the hill, it's different.
I mean, is consensus at concretes?
I'm comfortable with the concrete. I mean, if it was even approaching 50% granite up there, but it's, it sounds like it's majority concrete already, and this is not 50-year-old old construction that needs to get replaced, it's relative to new concrete. It sounds like the most consistent thing to do would actually be concrete.
I would agree with that.
Maintain it the way it is right now, straight through.
Yeah.
Concrete analysis.
It's all a great concrete consensus.
Now, what about lighting standards, what Patrick, what they discussed, I'm okay with.
Yeah, and it's the fact that it's actually closer to dark-skies standards, and it seems like, I don't think, and I think the staff didn't.
Yeah, we didn't have an issue with.
Yeah, so I think that's a thumbs up, if we approve it.
I do have a question on how we deal with the parking deferment. And I'll read a little bit of 1105-4, which allows us to do it. Says, "The site plan shall note the area where parking is being deferred with a dotted lot layout. If within a two-year period following issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the administrator, which in this case is us, but could very well be code enforcement, determines based on observed uses that the deferred parking is needed, and such parking shall be constructed by the applicant with 12 months of being informed of such request in writing by the administrator. The administrator may require a posting of a performance bond or other insurance to cover the estimated construction cost of the deferred parking with a refund or release in two years if the additional parking is not found to be necessary."
Is it a may or shall, in terms of money?
May. But I think we have to determine, should be something on the site plan covering how we determine in two years whether there's.
Who's going to make that decision in two years?
I mean, basically, I mean, it's going to be John and his site manager, whoever decides. Jeez, we need more parking. Unless they happen to be parking out on the street, then obviously, the city's going to take note of that.
Right.
I think we have to have some way to determine, you know, how we go about that in two years.
That's it, gee, and I'm just throwing this out, maybe John will throw me under the bus, I don't know. I mean, it could be that, you know, okay, I report back to code enforcement in 24 months from completion of construction. I mean, I'm fine with that, if that's what, if that's something that you're looking for.
I think it's pretty easy to prove one way or the other.
Right.
And do an observation study or two, and boom, done.
You know, and I think as the developer, you know, he's not going to want people uncomfortable with their parking availability, if that is the case, and so, because it's going to, he's going to have upset people in those units or people moving out, so, you know, I think he's going to say, okay, hey, listen, we need to do this.
Yeah, well, you have two things. One, they're just going to park helter-skelter.
Right.
You know, wherever, or B, they're going to go out in the street, and that would be a public safety issue. But I honestly can't imagine them saying, oh, let's park it along High Street.
Right.
But I mean.
Just don't imagine that.
Some managers, some owners are not as conscientious as John.
Right.
Let's say he sells it in 12. Let's say he sells it in twelve months.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's why we have the condition to report, you know, Andrew or whoever, you know, that...
Probably your, your comment handled about reporting in twenty-four months, Lori doesn't really care.
No, Lori doesn't care.
She's not going to be here during warm on. So Lori says, go right ahead.
No, no, no. We could do something like that and work with Andrew, that's not a problem. We'll be the first ones here about it, because the tenants will call and say they have no place to park.
Yeah.
And, and again, that would fall in the responsibility of the developer, right? Because if you don't have parking, you're not going to be able to rent the unit.
That's right.
No one's going to do that, so they...
The pressure will be higher on you than it is on the city.
Right, so you'd have to answer to the call, so to speak, you know.
But theoretically, it could become a problem. The developer, or some other developer says, I'm not paving it.
Right, sure.
Within the first two years, if this is, oh yeah, you are.
Right.
Then...
Yeah, but a, but a note either in...
I think right on the site plan.
Yeah, right on the site plan. I mean, you have a, a, a place marked for it and clear. And just put another note along there that talks about...
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be...
In two years, it's highly ill.
Right. It would be in the developer's best interest if there was a shortage of parking and you have the ability to add parking, to clearly add to parking, so, kind of answer to itself, I guess.
So Lori, yeah, Lori can put it on her calendar, so that the person that...
Yeah, the next person's calendar.
Follows her. An alarm goes off and says, hey.
So if you do that, if it comes down to that, are you looking at paving or doing whatever to the eighty-eight hundred square feet total that you've got marked? Because on SP, SP three, it shows eighty-eight hundred square feet back there.
Correct.
So that, you'd be, you'd be...
Well, that would take us to the original parking standard.
Yep.
In the ordinance.
Yep.
And what he read, though, says that you're supposed to have a dotted lot, you know, layout actually shown, but you don't.
Okay, I did, I turned it, I turned that right. I turned it off. I turned off the layout of the spaces.
Okay, turn it back on.
Okay.
Just saying.
The snow storage is there, where, where would that go if you had to do that?
It'll have to, I mean, there's a note on the plan that it would have to be hauled off.
Hold off, okay, yes, thank you, sorry.
I guess board also, before we get to the vote, I mean, like Patrick said, the last part about the performance bond, we may require it. So we should decide, do we need to require that, or...
Performance bond?
Says the administrator may require the posting of a performance bond or other assurance to cover the estimated construction cost of the deferred parking lot with a refund or release in two years if additional parking is not found to be necessary. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
I wouldn't feel like this case.
I mean, based on just the discussion we've had here about who's, who wins and gets to put more parking in. I mean, in essence, you, you do, and that's where the pressure comes. So I would, I would be against the...
I just want to cover all that bases.
That may come back to haunt us later.
As a practical matter, if, if we were going to include the reporting or inspection or whatever it's going to be, it would need to be like eighteen months or something like that, not right at twenty-four, because that's, that's the expiration requirement.
Yes.
So if Andrew comes in exactly twenty-four months, well, the day after Andrew comes in, they're not under this obligation.
Right, so make it eighteen months.
So it would be, need to be like eighteen months or something.
Right, I think that's a good number.
And that's from, that would be from CEO, right?
I'd say, should that should be from CEO, would that be from CEO?
Because there's still another year of construction, that's the thing.
Well, no, I mean, it's twenty-four months from when you get the certificate of occupancy.
Right.
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 So I guess I'm still unclear on why we're dealing with eighteen months.
Because, because the thing is, if it, if it expires, the thing says that after two years, they're in the clear. In other words, if this were to be okay at two years, but blow up at three years, too bad for our city, okay?
Right.
And so what he's saying is that...
Our ability to, to, to practically, the city's ability to practically enforce that means they need more warning, enough warning to provide notice.
Well, they have twelve months to pave it after, after they're notified that they have to pave it.
But that would presume, again, I'm, I'm talking about the extreme to make an example. If Andrew literally comes in on the last day, you know, day, what is it, three sixty-five, six hundred?
Seven hundred, twenty-seven, or eight hundred, whatever.
Then unless we, as the city, get all of our ducks in a row that day and present the notice, then it's expired the next day.
Yes. I mean, it's incumbent upon the city within that two-year period to say, John, you got to pave this.
I'd be, I'd be happier personally with the eighteen months.
So I think that's just saying that...
Is there a problem with that?
No, I think that's fine.
Within like, yeah, within the official, like, note, it'll just say that code enforcement or whoever will... Ensure that there's enough parking at eighteen months.
Whatever Christian code enforcement feels they need to process.
And I'll give the six months to actually enforce the notice.
And but, I mean, the problem will present itself immediately. By the time you go occupancy, upon you are there or not.
Are you guys ready for a public hearing?
What?
Are you ready for a public hearing? Public hearing?
Yes, I know. I have one question, I was just kind of curious, are you going to provide plugins for electric vehicles? That just kind of entered my mind the other night.
Yeah, we, we, it actually came up, it's funny you ask that. It, I, it's certainly an option, yeah. We haven't set that, we haven't made that concrete yet.
The issue, the issue with that is...
You're saving eight grand on granite.
Yeah, I mean, just, let's go.
Many ways to spend that.
We're going to provide Teslas, you know, we're saving all the money.
You know, what kind of charging station do you provide? Do you provide a unique Tesla that doesn't work with anything else? Or do you provide one for this type of vehicle? Or are you going to provide an array of different types?
We don't, we don't segregate our electric vehicles. We don't segregate our electric vehicles.
I, I understand that, but if you do one, are you going to do several other kinds?
Of course we are.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to give extension cords.
I mean, you see what I mean, I mean...
Oh, I know, I mean, just there is more and more electric vehicles, you see?
Let's, let's not get into that.
No requirement yet.
No, but again, it's...
It's wise for the developer.
It's a wise thing to consider.
It's going to be like providing handicap spaces, right?
Right.
Right.
Eventually.
I mean, different motivation, but the same idea.
I mean, it turns out if he's got a whole bunch of potential tenants, like, okay, do you have a plugin? No, so, okay, I guess I'll find one.
Or alternatively, John being the responsible landlord, that he says, I don't have it today, but tomorrow, we're all set.
Yeah, no, we seriously talked about doing like four of them, so. And, and I, I don't know, to answer Mike's question, I honestly don't know much about it, so I can't, I can't say that it's going to be a certain charging station or not, so.
I know, right? I mean, I don't imagine the fire department behind a bunch of extension cords running around through the parking lot.
That'd make, that'd make my day.
Ten gauge?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so I think we've pretty much covered all discussion on waivers. Any other questions from the board? And I will open the public hearing if anybody would like to address the board or ask a question. There's three of you back there. Okay, and I will close the public hearing. What is the wish of the board? How do you want to phrase the...
Phrase the...
Perhaps we should look down to the end of the table.
Ooh, that would...
That'd be a good idea.
Can I see the staff report that apparently they only care about you and give you one? So we've got the waivers for the parking deferment and the dark sky, the lighting, parking, and curbing, correct? Those would be the three waivers?
Yes.
Yeah, although the, the cur, the waiver for the curbing, it's not totally clear that you know waiver per se, right?
I didn't see, it's, it's approval by the board, but it doesn't say that it's a waiver.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
But we can, but we can approve it as if it is a waiver and covered.
I think the language is the substitute of the material, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're going form over substance there, but, sure, and then there's the conditions. So there would be, so the three waivers or pseudo waivers are lighting, parking, deferment, and curbing. And then the conditions would be, provide written proof that an application has been filed, main DP stormwater, provide updated traffic study showing no significant negative impact from the project or conflicts between the project and the ninety-fifth percentile queue lengths. And I don't think we need to change the language for that, I just think it's understood that the board, in order for the, to determine that no significant impact from the project has been provided, the board needs to meet to determine that. And then if we can get it in this, you know, again, we'd do that as soon as we could. But I, I think that we don't need to change the language there, that's just the process that that would be required. Staff understands that now, so we're fine. Revised details, sorry, I'll just get through them. Revised detail sheets to remove reference to asphalt sidewalk, revised plan set and detail sheet to comply with the requirement for granite curbing if applicable. Revised SP six to remove old notes from previous project, revised SP three to note waivers granted by the planning board and conditions of approval to be met after plans are signed. Then we have conditions to be met prior to the issuance of a building permit. Provide building floor plans to the fire and life safety inspector and city planner. Provide evidence of a contractual arrangement for the disposal of solid waste. Obtain approval for city road opening driveway permits. And then we have general conditions, the planning board approved deferred parking as indicated, but may require the deferred parking be constructed if it is determined that the need within two years of the issuance certified of occupancy of seventy-two one-bedroom dwelling units per chapter fifty-six of the UDO, section one-one-zero-five-four-A. So there, we discuss, I think the only thing we need to, my review, the only thing we want to update is this eighteen-month requirement for, that's not, is that a, we're just saying the city's going to reach out in eighteen months? I don't know if that's a condition.
I could put it on our inspection calendar, that's not a problem, that will be there after I go.
Because we're not imposing, it sounds like we're not imposing on, your proposal wasn't to impose it on them, was it? Put it on the city, or do you...
I was, I was just, it was just common sense commentary on the topic.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I think, I think the, the, the rule is the rule. I guess I'm not clear if we even need to talk about it at all in the motion, because it's not going to change the fact that it's still there.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right, and I think it's more just, it's a, the city will reach out in eighteen months and say, how are you doing?
And there should still be designation on the plan that this is the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And that's, that's part of the conditions.
Lori, you had a comment?
No, I said I would put it on the inspection calendar, and that will be there after I leave, so.
Along that line, you know, if it, most likely, if there's a parking problem, it's the developer that's going to say, true parking problem, we're going to pave it. But in the small chance that it is the city that decides, I mean, it refers to, the ordinance refers to the administrator. Now, the way it's written, I think the administrator, in that case, would be the more...
Yep.
Yeah, and I think that's right, because notwithstanding, I totally agree with who, who's going to be putting pressure on whom, but I still think it's our responsibility.
Yeah, okay. Yep, yeah, we would, and if we get, if it turns out that this needs to be addressed, we'll just get it, we'll, we'll add it to the following agenda, or have a special meeting.
So why don't you say the, he, he's not an official voting member today?
No, I think I am.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, then he can make the motion.
Patrick, yeah.
Sure.
I forgot he was still...
So, I, uh...
Still a temp?
Yeah. I like it, I don't have any responsibility with it.
But now, here's, here's your first responsibility.
Raise your right hand.
So I think I would move that we vote to approve the final plan review of a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Stone...
Park.
Park.
Stone Park.
Properties.
Properties for applicant owner Branch Pond LLC. The proposal is to construct a multifamily dwelling containing seventy-two units. The subject property is a two-point-six-acre lot located at multifamily dwelling, located at, sorry, three seventy-seven High Street, tax map sixteen, lot sixteen, the commercial zoning district. Sub, uh, subject to approval of waiver requests outlined in the staff memo dated September seventh, twenty-twenty-two regarding waivers to lighting requirements, request for parking deferment, and curbing using, and, and curbing...
Concrete curbing.
Concrete curbing. Also subject to conditions of approval required to be met prior to signing of plans numbered one through six. Also subject to conditions to be met prior to the issuance of the building permit numbered one, two, through three, and also subject to general condition number one regarding parking deferment.
Second.
Got that?
No.
Just making sure, I had got it all, all in paper? Yeah, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Matt, you had, have some staff comments?
Just an announcement for anybody, well, the board in particular, but Andrew, John, also often attend and public the remains. The city is doing a grant application process to become part of the community resilience partnership the state's established to get more grant funding essentially, it's based on improvements around climate change, so like upgrades to public transportation, stormwater, road improvements, that sort of thing. You have to become a member of this partnership to be available to apply to get that money further. And we're having a public forum September fifteenth, five-thirty to six-thirty here. Again, the board, we'd really like to see a lot of you guys there, but also the public and people who are involved in Ellsworth.
Who's the money for?
Are welcome. It's for the city.
Who's, who, who are you applying?
Oh, it's with the state, it's a program for the state.
Is it ARPA money?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, in twenty seconds or less, solar stuff, is there a schedule or...
Next month. Yeah, I would say for next month, it might, will be on our agenda.
So, so we'll probably see a draft ordinance for the board to review.
I think that's Elena's goal, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Any update on conference of plans?
That was the second twenty seconds.
Not really, there is, but like, not really.
But you haven't forgotten about it, right?
We haven't forgotten.
The update is, there's no update.
Yeah, essentially.
Now, one thing that may help us, well, should help us out in the future is, I think on the last council meeting, they approved awarding a grant to an engineering firm, I think, to, to camera all the stormwater ratings in the city. I want you to help us in the future.
And I think you think good of him.
So, anything else?
Anything, yeah, anything else?
Anything else, Matthew?
Well done.
Take your heads back and forth, man. There you go.
Anyone want to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in paper?